What do you want us to do for our? Hmm? The resolution?
No, everything.
Yeah.
Well, we all had fifteen days' minutes. Isn't TB supposed to?
Okay, you guys ready?
We're ready.
Greg, we're ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to the Towne Riverhead Planning Board Meeting, July sixth, twenty seventeen. First item on our agenda tonight is a discussion on the Fadoun Warehouse application. So if you just want to come up to the table, I know you're here. Okay, you have some updates for us, Frank?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to your attention real quick before we vote on our final site plan approval tonight. Um, we've got the site plan for the Fadoun Warehouse on Lincoln Street. Um, there's just been a couple of revisions that have been made. He's included the stockade fence along the eastern side of the property. Um, and there was also some drainage improvements that he's made in the Lincoln Street right away. Uh, it's going to be coordinated with the Towne Riverhead Highway Department. Um, he's also going to be installing a irrigation system to keep the landscaping, you know, maintained.
Is he, Greg, is the stockade six foot or four?
Uh, it's going to be six foot.
Six foot?
Correct. And now there's just a couple of quick little updates that were questions from the last one. Bring your attention and we've got the resolution on for this evening.
Have they submitted a new plan?
Yes, yes. And that's all I have.
Okay, so we're all set for the resolution, everything's included?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll bring it up on the resolutions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion item for Edwin official two C O, transfer of development rights. How are you? This discussion item, not public hearing, so right at the table, please.
I represent Conic Management. We're purchasing a one T D R from Mr. Tucio. The parcel is situate, the parcel to give the T D R situate on Roanoke Avenue. You previously approved this parcel for transfer of development rights. And, uh, we're purchasing one from him. You have before you the title search, the new survey. The meets and bounds description has been forwarded to our Planning Board. Ms. Thaw unfortunately has the flu, she's not, uh, wasn't in today, but, uh, um, we're ready to go.
If you could just say your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Francis Yakavaski. Sixteen sixty-eight Sound Avenue, Calverton, New York.
Okay, um, just, uh, Mr. Al, is everything's in order for us to, um, vote on this resolution tonight?
Yes, sir, your, your board has approved the overall parcel as a transfer parcel and, uh, about sixteen of them are transferred out already, this would be another page of the reserve.
Good.
All the parcel have been approved for T D R?
The, the entire vacant tract was approved as a T D R tract and then as debt purchasers were working away at cost. This is contiguous in existence, so you have, uh, access to inspection.
Yeah, we saw that on the board. And we saw that on the board.
So we're just adding one to the previous parcel?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll bring it up on the resolutions?
Thank you, sir.
We have several public hearings, so it'll be a while before we get to it.
I think I could, I think I-
The location where it's going is an approved receiving area.
Yes, indeed, as a matter of fact, the application is pending and it was, uh, Mr. Hammond who said that, uh, we'd need a T D R in order to get approval, so we're, this is what we're doing. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, the first public hearing we have tonight is for Little Flower Children's minus subdivision. Uh, discuss a two lot minus subdivision of a fifteen point eight seven parcel located on North Waiting River Road in Waiting River.
Pete Danasky, in behalf of Little Flower, uh, six one six Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York. Uh, this is an application that was filed as a result of a desire to refinance, um, the property. Um, and the split, um, doesn't presuppose any new construction with regard to this property. We really want to draw a line around the improvements that are already there for the residential structure. Historically, uh, the residential structure at one point was used for non-residential purposes in certain improvements, specifically the parking lot and drainage was created on site. Uh, that was a fully approved site plan by the town and then it went back to residential use. Uh, in shaping the smaller of the two proposed lots, uh, we had reactions from the Building Department and Mr. Bergman and Planning Staff, and we adjusted the setbacks for any improvements, so it wouldn't require any variances. The last issue became a matter that Brad Hammond, uh, sent a letter to me on, which talked about the impervious surface requirement. Um, we show approximately thirty-five percent impervious surfaces. We really don't want to rip out the parking and rip out the drainage. And Mr. Hammond had suggested that the Planning Board could waive, uh, the requirement with regard to impervious surfaces as to that proposed small lot area. I would also say that there is no intention immediately to resplit the larger area, which is over thirteen acres in size. Um, we wouldn't want to at the end of the process, uh, have to go through an abandonment of a map. So perhaps the final map would show a one lot section of the map to avoid the abandonment issue in the future. But for now, we're just trying to draw two acre plus area for the improved area, thirteen acres for the remainder of the area, with no intention of immediately constructing. That's the application.
Does anyone from the public want to comment on this public hearing for Little Flower Children's minus subdivision? Anyone from the public?
Just one question, Peter. Um, the impervious services that you spoke about at Lot One?
That's correct. It is the existing parking area.
Okay, last call, any resident or any one of the audience want to speak on this application?
I'm moving close to public hearing.
Second to motion? Okay, motion made, seconded to close the public hearing for Little Flower. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, bro.
Okay, next public hearing on the agenda is for Gil Martin, lot, uh, lot line modification, Conic Bay Boulevard.
Good evening, Charles Cuddy for the applicant, office at four four five Griffin Avenue, Riverhead, New York. This is a lot that's, uh, facing Conic Bay, St. Jamesport, it's in the R forty district. In nineteen eighty-two, the predecessors to my client, twice removed, transferred or had transferred to them a small parcel, fifteen thousand square feet, and added on to their existing parcel, which was one acre. That became a separate tax lot. And it had a C O issued for a swimming pool even on the separate tax lot. When my clients bought the property, they decided they wanted to expand the house. And in order to do that, we're merging these lots or making a lot line modification. So we're adding fifteen thousand square feet to their one point one acre. And the neighbor, Mr. Swakowitz, has a twelve point eighteen acre site. His will be reduced to eleven point eight acres. And all this really is, is combining what's already there, but it's separate lots, the way it was set up. Uh, we're going to the Health Department to get approval, so that we'll have a complete, uh, approval for a, essentially a subdivision. But that's all this is, is just adding the fifteen thousand square feet formally to this lot, uh, which was not done in nineteen eighty-two.
So basically, it sounds like it's just correcting a survey error.
That's, it's correcting an error that was made years ago, because-
Anyone from the public have any comments on this public hearing for Gil Martin lot line modification? Anyone from the public?
A question for you, Greg. In your staff report, you mentioned there's three lots, three tax lots?
Yes.
And one, and, and the map only shows two parcels?
Well, as they currently exist, when the, uh, the needed parcel was transferred to the Gil Martin's predecessor, it created the third tax lot, so there actually are three tax map numbers there.
The small lot also had a number, that's what happened?
The fifteen thousand square foot that's being formally included now has its own tax map number.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Public, last chance?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the Gil Martin lot line modification, so moved.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Gil Martin lot line modification, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Number three, Atlantis Calverton. Site plan application to convert an existing gas station, convenience store and auto shop, uh, sixteen seat Dunkin' Donuts restaurant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Keith Brown, Harris Beach P L L C, five thirty eight Broad Hollow Road, Suite three oh one West, Noble, New York, one one seven four seven. We're here tonight with respect to forty-six forty-seven Calverton Realty LLC's site plan application to convert an approved repair shop, convenience store and deli use into a Dunkin' Donuts use and convenience store at the existing gas station located at forty-six seventy Middle Country Road in Calverton, New York, which is located slightly to the east of the intersection of Middle Country Road and Parker Road. With to be tonight to discuss the development, Mr. Rich Sapolsky of Prime Engineering, the project engineer, Mr. Frank Feliciotto of Stonefield Engineering and Design, the project traffic engineer, as well as Jean Paul, uh, representative of forty-six forty-seven Calverton Realty LLC's parent company, Atlantis Management Corp. As a matter of housekeeping, we just filed all affidavits of posting and proof of mailing, along with the other documents which we rely upon during our presentation here tonight. As far as the application is concerned, it's a very straightforward application, as the gas station has been operating on the site since at least nineteen fifty, with the site being substantially cleared circa nineteen forty-seven. Further, in two thousand and five, the prior gas station developed, was raised and the existing gas station with the repair shop and convenience store use was constructed in accordance with the plans approved by the Town Board and the Town Planning Board. With respect to the character of the development, we note that there are commercial uses to the east of the property along Middle Country Road, including small shopping centers and a standalone bagel shop. To the west, north and south of the properties, primarily vacant land, the Calverton Executive Air Park, Grumman Memorial Park and Calverton National Cemetery. The site itself is bordered on three sides by vacant undisturbed land, which the site design provides contiguous buffers to. The applicant also notes that the nearest residence is more than six hundred feet from the property. Accordingly, these improvements will not be impacting any of the neighboring residents. The site, the site layout will remain unchanged by the instant application. Only the area within the existing building footprint will be materially disturbed by the application. In short, the existing repair shop will be discontinued. The repair shop is located in the rear of the building and will be largely replaced by the Dunkin' Donuts use, as well as expanded convenience store, uh, sorry, convenience store offerings. As part of the redevelopment, a rear entrance will be installed. In addition, the front entrance will be maintained. Further, new wall signs will be proposed for the Dunkin' Donuts, together with the building facade alterations that were presented at the A R B on June twenty-eighth. The ground sign is also the same size and location as that previously approved for the site. The only new variance for the ground sign relates to the request for internal illumination, which is a consequence of the modifications in the zoning code. Here we note that the internal illumination requests are substantially similar to those recently approved by the Z B A for the Bola Station located at thirty-seven oh five Middle Country Road in Calverton, as well as the Atlantis Mart located at six two six Main Street, Riverhead. New canopy signs are also proposed. Here we note that the Exxon signs are actually smaller than previously approved Sunoco signs and the number of canopy signs will be reduced from three to two by this application. Finally, we note that we received and reviewed the Town Planning Department's staff report dated May twenty-fourth of twenty seventeen. The applicant will make all modifications noted in the report, which include parking lot and landscape improvements, as well as improvements to the building and onsite lighting. As such, we respectfully request preliminary site plan approval subject to any improvements noted by the staff report. That concludes our presentation. Um, we have the experts here, if you have any questions that you'd like to ask at this time. Thank you.
A quick question. I know when these digital signs first started coming out, a couple of stations, I, I guess before they were approved, had really bright, um, lights. I think they're good for the consumer because they get to see, driving their little prices, but how do we control how bright those are? This is, is it codified or no? No?
Mr. Sisk, I could actually approach that. We, uh, when we did the, uh, Bola Mart located in Calverton also, we submitted testimony that night, as well as we actually did an onsite, uh, exhibit, uh, where we actually showed that the signs today, those L E D signs that you're talking about, they're actually built in with a, a device that actually dims them depending on the amount of darkness at night. So there's a mechanism in them which provides that they don't, they're not overly bright, so that they would be a distraction to any of the motorists. And Frankie Feliciotto worked on that project as well, so he could speak to it if, if you have any questions about it.
Okay, thank you. And also, do they meet the parking requirements now with the change of music?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
What, what about, uh, paving? As far as the existing sites concerned?
I beg your pardon?
Paving.
Will you be repaving the site? There was a request to, uh, yes, to, to repair some of the asphalt, uh, that's in disrepair, as well as, um, restripe it, so we'll be taking care of that as well. Just for the record, Atlantis took over the site, uh, they recently purchased it, so this is all part of kind of redevelopment of the site, give it a, a shot in the arm that it, that it could use.
Oh, there's some photos in your, in the application, uh, in our staff report, which really shows up the areas that really need to be repaired.
Yes.
Right, you referenced the May twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen staff report and you said you agreed to make all the changes recommended in here.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is anyone from the public want to speak or ask questions on this public hearing? Atlantis Calverton, anyone from the public?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for Atlantis Calverton, so moved.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Atlantis Calverton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, the, uh, next public hearing, number four on the agenda, is for Bating Hollow Cottage condominium, number three. Site plan application to discuss and, uh, to demolish an existing four hundred and seventy-three square foot cottage and construct a new twelve hundred and twenty-three square foot cottage. Okay, number twenty-three.
Good evening, members of the board, chairman and staff. Uh, Thomas Walpert, engineer with Young and Young, representing the applicant. Rafael Gamba, who is also present tonight, uh, should the board have any questions of him? This project is fairly straightforward. We are proposing to construct a two-story addition to an existing cottage. There are some minor site improvements that are involved as well, which include reusing the existing water service, public water service connection, uh, installing, well, first abandoning the existing cesspool and ins- upgrading it to a septic tank and leaching pool system. We do have Health Department approval to make those improvements. Uh, we are also, uh, installing two dry wells to contain roof runoff and constructing a small retaining wall, uh, about forty-five feet in length and varying in height from a half a foot to two and a half foot. And that is just to, uh, comply with the Health Department requirements for finished grading. That's about it. Uh, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer. I'm sorry?
The timber wall?
The timber retaining wall? Yes.
They didn't ask for concrete?
No, it's not really required because it's above the sewage flow line and it's really just for, uh, to accomplish the final grading requirements of five percent for twenty feet beyond the, uh, outer edge of the leaching pool.
The homeowners association board of directors signed off on the project?
The homeowners association, uh, board of directors did sign off on the project. You have a, a copy of the architectural drawings in your file that was signed by the members of the, the governing body.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Anyone from the public, uh, want to comment on this application? Anyone from the public? Bating Hollow Cottage condominium, number three, twenty-three.
I move we close the public hearing on Bating Hollow condominium cottage, number twenty-three.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Bating Hollow Cottage condominium twenty-three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, number five on the agenda, Long Island National Solar Panels. Site plan to install approximately twenty-two hundred square feet of ground mounted solar panels.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, actually, I do have the mailing and the, the certifications and also including, has a photograph from the data posting sign. Martin Sunlouski, uh, representing, uh, Long Island National Golf Course. I'm just going to very briefly go over the administrative, uh, items, if there are more technical items. The representatives from the golf course, as well as Sun Nation are here that could answer any additional technical questions. Um, basically, it's a installation of roof mounted and ground mounted solar panels for onsite usage for the golf course, for the facilities, cart charging, et cetera. Um, any of the comments that have been received, uh, since our initial submission, as well as our previous discussion with the board and the staff, have been accommodated, including, uh, increasing the, the screen fence to eight feet with additional landscaping, as well as increasing, uh, the separation between the solar panels and the fence to ten feet for access per the Fire Marshal and, I believe, the Fire Department. Um, any of the additional comments that we had were, had been accommodated. Um, and if there are any questions, technical questions or questions of the manager of the golf course, we'd be more than happy to, uh, to answer any questions. Do you have anything you want to hear from the board?
Uh, Scott Maskin for Sun Nation Solar Systems, we're developing the project. I just want to stress that this is, um, the ground mounted portion is only twenty-two thousand feet. This is not taking up a hundred and ten, uh, acres of land. This is strictly for his consumption and his metering onsite, is not to sell the electricity.
Okay, so you, you increased the setbacks, uh, for the Fire Marshal's comments. Did that reduce the footprint of twenty-two thousand square feet at all?
No, we just reconfigured it, we moved a few things around. Um, remember, this is private property, it's a golf course. The aesthetics of the property are very important to the, uh, to the client, so, um, we've, uh, taken a lot of steps for fencing, for landscaping, we're going above and beyond the call.
Uh, when you were at the work session, we had, we had discussed that, or you had mentioned that, um, all of the, um, energy produced is going to be used onsite, but, uh, P S E N G required that you change the service because it went back out into the grid and then came back onto the property?
Yeah, that's how it works with a, with a net metering system like this. Um, the service was inadequate to take the backflow, so we had to, we will have to construct the service, but that's already factored in and that's also screened in as well. But the consumption, the production is offsetting about a hundred percent of the consumption of the site and that's it.
It was mentioned, it was mentioned in our staff report about the two mature trees?
Yeah. Uh, from a landscaping perspective, we went over it with Greg, um, we're going to spade those trees, we're going to relocate them to the other side. The beautiful trees, we'll be saving those. And existing, all the existing arbivideae that are there, we're also going to be used for screening as well. So we're going to do the best we can, uh, to maintain the integrity of the site.
Irrigation is on a separate well?
Yeah, there is irrigation in that area, it's right near the driving range. Uh, we'll reconfigure the irrigation and there is no drainage, we did all the topography. There's no drainage issues with the site, it's, it, it will absorb, uh, the runoff of the solar.
But it's not town water, it's a separate well?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, quite frankly, that, that's one of the most significant loads onsite are the wells that irrigate the, um, the golf course. Between that and the golf court, it is, you know, it does have load. And he's taking the steps to be environmentally conscious and, uh, he's pulling himself off, not off-grid, but he's not part of the problem, he's part of the solution.
Anyone from the public have any comments or questions on this application? Long Island National Solar? Anyone from the public? Just come up to the podium and state your name and, and, uh, ask your question or you'll provide your comment, please?
My name is Carol Murray, uh, I live at twelve hundred Cross River Drive, the horse horn right next to the golf course. Um, I, as it stands, I, I personally, I don't have too many objections to it, but I wonder if in the future, are you going to try and expand it bigger? Come on down, further down with it? Is there, is there a limit?
Uh, no, ma'am, I'm, I'm all the intended.
But that's well intended, but I mean legally, can you do that? Can you actually expand it?
If you could just come to the podium and state your name and answer the question, please?
My name's Frank Argento Junior, I'm the manager of the golf club, Long Island National. Um, we're not looking to expand it, these gentlemen have helped us.
Well, they don't, they don't have a right to sell-
Right.
-power back. They're doing as well as-
So I could do it too?
Sure.
Anyway.
Right.
So they can sell all of the-
No, they can't sell it back.
Well-
I can add to that. So the system was specifically designed for the load on the golf course. The golf court, I'm sorry?
The system was specifically sized for the load on the golf course and the Town Board made us demonstrate that the kilowatt hour consumption was only for the kilowatt hour production. This is not a, a swap of agro for commerce, as some of the other ones are. Um, and we submitted all the bills and all the documentation for that.
So unless, and I'm asking, like, legal questions, somewhere, you sell it.
Right.
Does anybody else want to-
Mrs. Murray's specific question is if the golf course closes its doors next summer, can that whole parcel become solar? That's a question, I think Greg wants to comment.
Yeah, I, I think I can, uh, so the site is located in the agricultural protection zone and commercial solar production facilities are not permitted use in that zone. So they, as a right, they would not be able to do it, not by special permit or any other kind of-
Yeah.
They're in, they're in an industrial zone over there, it's not the same zoning zone, it's only just on the golf.
And besides the legal standpoint, we intend to be your neighbors as Long Island National Golf Club for a long time. We're, uh, invested in being a golf club, we want to be a golf club, it's going great for us, so there's no, no intention on the ownership's part to transform this to something else.
I understand, absolutely.
Right, right. No, we, we want to be good neighbors, we're going to do our best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments or questions to this application?
Make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the Long Island National Solar Panels, public hearing, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Long Island National Golf Course solar panel installation, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, next, public hearing is for four fifty-two Main Road. Site plan application to renovate a two-story, single-family house with a basement into a first-story restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Jaclyn Peranto. I'm an owner at Prime Engineering. Our, we're located at six six four Blue Point Road in Holtsville, New York. I just handed in the affidavit of posting and the copies of the return receipts for the mailings. Here tonight, representing Amanda Falcone and Kyle Romeo, the owners of the property. The subject property is identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number District six hundred, section eighty-five, block three, lot two, four fifty-two Main Road, Aquabog. The parcel size is eleven thousand twenty square feet. It's located in the Hamlet Center zoning district. The project consists of a renovation of a thirty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-six square foot, two-story, single-family house with a basement into a first-story restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating totaling sixteen seats, fourteen inside and two outside. There's also a basement with a walk-in cooler box and a finished area for dry storage and a second-story apartment. The project requires seven stalls and seven stalls are provided on the site. The site will consist of the construction of a concrete access apron off New York State Route twenty-five and approval from New York State DOT has been obtained. A gravel parking area is proposed. Dumpster enclosure at the rear of the property is also proposed. New onsite drainage improvements, exterior lighting and onsite landscaping is also part of this project. The main entrance to the restaurant is located at the rear of the building in close proximity to the accessible parking stalls. Cross access is provided to the property on the east side only as the parking is necessary on the west side. Landscaping has been addressed per staff comments as well as, the staff report dated May first, we had responded to those comments and worked with Karen Gluth on the project and resubmitted drawings back on June twenty-eighth.
Do you have Health Department approval?
We have Health Department approval. The grease traps installed. We need to go back to them because of the water service. The size of the water service is increasing from the residential to the commercial. We do have approval from the Riverhead Water District and Suffolk County Water on the RPZ device and we got a verbal, we don't have the paperwork just yet.
What's the service now? One inch or three-quarter?
Yeah, it's a one inch.
And you're going to go to?
Um, we're.
Two and a half?
Yeah, we have a fire sprinkler service as well, so I want to say it ended up being a four. It could be. I think there's actually a domestic and a fire.
Are you going to have two separate? Do you feel that two separate services?
Yeah, actually, there's a four-inch fire and the one-inch domestic's going to remain.
The approval for the RPZ device wouldn't be Suffolk County Water, it would be Riverhead Water District?
Riverhead Water District, correct. I'm sorry, did I say Suffolk County Water? I meant Suffolk County Health. Because they also, they review it and then send it over to Riverhead Water District.
Any questions from the public on this application? Four fifty-two Main Road in Aquabog? Any public comments? Anything else from the board? No? Okay.
I'll move to close the public hearing on four fifty-two Main.
Second motion? The motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for four fifty-two Main Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay. What? Oh. Okay, item number seven is being adjourned until August third. That's a preliminary major residential subdivision of Capel Farm. So we requested to come up again on August third. Okay, before we vote on the resolutions, any comments from the public on the resolutions and from the board? Any comments at all on the resolutions?
I'll move resolution number fifty-eight. The coastal dwelling hazard permit for Cavallaro Steel Stairway in Holtsville.
Second motion? Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-eight, chapter two nineteen for Dana Cavallaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Move resolution number fifty-nine of the Riverhead Planning Board for the final site plan approval for the new warehouse. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-nine, final site plan approval of the new warehouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Resolution number three. Preliminary site resolution for J. Petroselli Parking. To approve a preliminary site plan application, twenty-seven stall parking lot, five S-Quart stalls and handicap park. Right in the heart of it.
Second motion?
Yes. The planning staff received a letter from the State DOT and I had conversation as I believe Mr. Guardiello also returned to the Alton. And based on that discussion, engineers from Young and Young, the, the director today discussed whether it could be resolved and I believe based on the perspective and result, if we were to, if we might continue to adopt the resolution subject to that, meaning the result is satisfactory.
We're going to have to submit this, I do a map for later on.
Yes. So. The train design is to be amended.
Right.
It was basically moving the train a little bit tight. I think there's a dedication that the DOT required and it did. That's the only thing.
And, and you meaning Vinnie, they were agreeable to it?
Well, my, my understanding is that Young and Young has modified the drawing. I have most security working in that, that team here at the meeting today, but maybe the plan is done, it's a matter of getting it back to the tent.
You know, if, does DOT look at that plan?
No. From the main engineering standpoint, their approach to it appeared to be in a manner that would satisfy the towns concerned or the main concerns that were raised by myself as well as what the DOT and the.
Okay, so if we amend the resolution to include the state comments that meet your approval of our consulting engineer, we could move forward a bit. Okay. Do you want to amend it some? Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That would be fine.
Just to be. Oh, actually, we have something.
I think there's something in there already.
Yeah, yeah. On page three, it says revised plan to be submitted. And then.
This was anticipated.
Item B says DOT.
Yeah, the reason I just want to bring it to your attention, the letter came in just a few days ago.
Right.
Sort of crystallized.
She, Karen shared it with us.
Do we need to modify the resolution or is it good to go as, as Karen anticipated this issue? I believe it's good to go.
Good help.
Karen anticipated this issue and that's the board.
Page four says a revised site plan with the new vision date included. In other words, they have to submit it. And item B says any revisions required by the state.
Right, I think we're already.
Did we have a second on this?
No, we don't.
You don't?
I'll say.
Have we removed it?
You did.
I did.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty, preliminary site plan resolution for J. Petroselli Parking. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Number four. Make a motion to move resolution number sixty-one. Riverhead Planning Board for a preliminary site plan approval for twin-four year company. So moved.
Maybe you just got us comments today.
Yep.
Are they incorporated?
Uh, there's a note in there that the site plan shall be revised to comply with the town engineer's comments.
Do you want to just give flavor as to, for the record? Are the plans okay, the conditions, revisions needed?
Just to piggyback, you know, when I put on this project and my previous comments, I agree with the grading of the site and relationship to the existing vegetation that we have to. The site slopes from west, I'm sorry, east to west. They're going to need to provide us with a, they're going to need to do a better job with the grading design that's basically outside footprint of the parking lot as well as the building along the northern, northern portion of the building and the eastern portion of the building. In addition to that, the way that they have to both do right-of-way and curving in the sidewalk, I consider it more of a, you know, conceptual and that they should really do some consultation with the highway supervisor kind of with respect to how they transition the curving, the curving that exists in the south, in the south. And, and whether there's a need for additional trees within the road right-of-way and, and the need for curving along the entire property, which is that right now, where they're spending the purpose radius to a point where the vehicle access comes into the site. So all that is identified.
In the memo and that was shared with them?
That was sent to the, to the county of town. I assume that that would be given to them along the.
Is the date of the letter in the resolution?
Uh, the date of the letter is not in the resolution.
We just need to include the date of Vinnie's resolution, uh, memo in the resolution.
You want to add a resolve?
Well, there, there's a, there's a line in there that says it shall be revised to, you know, comply with comments from Vinnie. So we'll, I'll just include the date of the letter to reference it.
So it'd just be a lot, that would modify the patient's resolution.
But, you know, you've got to be a town engineer, isn't it, planning board?
It should be the town's.
Town's consulting engineer.
Town's consultant. Because we, town has a town engineer.
Correct. And we wanted to make a distinction as.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of open ends to the truth, the resolution itself. Items that we brought up as far as outdoors, we can fifty feet. I think I'd let myself, I'm, I'm waiting. So, if it needs to, it's cleared up and a little clearer.
Okay, so I have a motion and no second for this resolution. Who makes motion with it?
I would suggest if you don't come on the drop table and then you turn it off the table, it might be like a more, more.
It's got a withdrawal motion.
More withdrawal.
No, I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Like, I'm not asking you to do it the same. Several options.
Delay for the sake of delay. I'm opposed to it. All the work can be done and you can still give them their preliminary approval. That's my position.
So I'll second the, the, the motion. So we have a motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-one, which we're adding the date of the town consulting engineer's comments to the applicant in the resolution. All in favor?
Any questions?
Mm-hmm.
This is a preliminary approval?
Yes.
Correct.
So they still have to submit.
The final site plan includes this. There'll be revisions.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
One.
Okay, resolution is adopted, three to one. Number five.
Make a motion to move resolution sixty-two of the Riverhead Planning Board for a preliminary site plan approval for FKA three seventeen properties. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-two for FKA three seventeen properties. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Number six.
I'll move resolution number sixty-three, which is the administrative approval of the site plan for the Bank of America to conform with ADA improvements.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-three, administrative site plan approval for Bank of America. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Number seven.
Extension of subdivision approval for far minus subdivision. Resolution sixty-four.
Second motion? Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-four, extension of a subdivision approval for far minus subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Number eight.
Declaration of adequacy and acceptance of the DEIS for S power. Resolution room sixty-five, two thousand seventeen.
Second motion? Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-five, declaration of and acceptance of the DEIS for S power. All in favor?
Aye.
Question? I just had a question, Jeff. What's the timetable of this?
This will be open for public comment for thirty days. At which time, all those comments will be submitted to the applicant to respond to any of the substantive comments in preparation of an FDIS.
Okay, so everyone approves, opposed? Resolution sixty-five is adopted.
Should it go in the press? Should it be published in the press?
It'll be published in ENB. It'll be, the document will be available in the library. We can publish it in the press if you like. It'll be on the town website as well, the entire document.
I think the press will be in order.
Resolution nine on the agenda?
Quick discussion right over that. Just to let people know what's actually happening here. This is a twofold win-win. It's letting a business person use a little bit more of their property and preserving farm acreage out in the, in the green belt. So it's kind of a one-win situation. So I'll move resolution sixty-six, which is Edwin Fischel Tucio, transfer of development rights. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-six, transfer of development rights for Edwin Fischel Tucio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Okay, so I see you guys were out, we approved it already.
Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Eric Russo, Van Branshew, Jack Russo with offices at one forty Main Street in Seville. Mr. Adams and I were just outside looking at the revisions in response to comments that we received from the DOT on Monday. As he may, or he can explain, and we were going over, we can address and resolve the one issue that they have put forward and I believe he's discussed it with Mr. Guardiello and can be resolved. Our concern is it's taken us eleven and a half months to get to this point and we appreciate the review process that's gone on and we're hoping that before the end of the month, we'll be able to come in with the one revision. And I talked to the DOT today and hopefully we'll be able to get final and be done by the end of the month, if that's possible.
We'll certainly try. We approve the preliminary tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Greatly appreciated. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any comments from the public on any matter in front of the board? Any comments? Open to the public.
Chairman, if no one has a comment, I do. I was wondering if it would be appropriate for the planning board to send a recommendation letter, not a resolution, to the town board. I think the traffic and safety committee should consider a four-way stop at Horton Lynn leaves. We're in the planning department, I don't know if it's appropriate to come from us, but I think it's bad planning to have that, that intersection is pretty bad. There was a bad one there the other day.
Is there, is there a stop sign in one, in one direction?
Yeah. There's a stop sign in one direction and there's fences in all three corners, the cemetery and then two aglocks. And it's been a, a spot of.
There's two now and one's making it four-way.
Well, I'd, I'd like to send it to the town board committee.
I know, but wait, what's the recommendation? Four-way to have an.
Four-way would be my recommendation, but I just wanted to run it by members to see if.
Okay, that was a corner rebound, sorry.
Horton and Horton.
Horton, oh.
Yeah. You're okay with that.
Yeah.
Next year. You know, just have a sentiment committee and if it's appropriate, do it. I think that would be good.
Along the same lines. Along the same lines, um, last year in August, we drafted letters to the State DOT, um, about Edwards Avenue and Main Road in Calverton. And we didn't officially send them because, uh, we were meeting with the school on their project and some of the other projects were going on, so we, we held off. And I, I think we should, uh, redate them and, and get them out as soon as possible. And I was, I, I sent you a request to Emily who finalized the letter, not knowing if she... Well, that's fine, I could come in and sign it as long as the board agrees. I just got the file ready. Any other discussion?
Right now, she's not in any shape.
No.
She's not in probably any shape to, uh...
No.
The minutes of June fifteenth for approval?
I move the minutes of June fifteenth.
Second. The motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of June fifteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's approved. Next meeting date is July twentieth, work session at three P M. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Jeff. I know.
Gentlemen, have a great weekend.
Emily, don't make me do that again.
Emily, get better.
It took three of us to do your job.